Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 16th, 2013, 7:00 PM Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then immediately following, I would like to stop and have a moment of silence for the horrific tragedy today in Washington, DC at the Navy Yard. We've lost at least six of our fellow Americans. So, a moment of silence for them and their families, and then also a moment of silence for Rena Berthalet, who passed away last week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have Rena Berthalet, passed away last week, and for those who aren't aware, that her and her husband donated the parcel of property to allow the entrance to the Millville Elementary School. So, the town is very grateful to the Berthalets, and the Board wishes to offer their sincere condolences to the family and the loved ones. The Board canceled the coffee with selectmen, which was scheduled for this past Saturday, September 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, at the Chestnut Hill Community Center. We will post a new date on the cable access channel once that has been determined. We apologize for the inconvenience. And the Centennial Celebration Kickoff Event will take place on Sunday, September 29th, beginning at 11:00 AM on the grounds of both Longfellow Municipal Center and the Veterans' Memorial Park. The rain date is the following Sunday, October 6th. The purpose of the kickoff event is to bring awareness to the town's upcoming 100th anniversary in 2016 and kick off the fundraising to take place over the next couple of years in order -- excuse me, couple -- whoop, how did I lose my place? Not used the glasses yet. In order to fund a big celebration in May of 2016. The kickoff event will include various groups providing live music on the Longfellow grounds, as well as a DJ playing at the Veterans Memorial Park. Other planned items include a magic show, clown, bouncy houses, dunk tank, public safety vehicles on display, and activities for small children. This is a family-friendly community event. Centennial T-shirts are still on sale and are available at the police station Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 3:00. A variety of additional sizes are now available. The cost is $12. The sale of the T-shirts will help to raise funds for the 100th celebration. T-shirts will also be available during the kickoff event. Next, we have approval of minutes and warrants for September 3rd, 2013, at 6:30 PM.
Motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of September 3rd at 6:30.
All in favor? Next, we have September 3rd again, 2013.
Motion to accept September 3rd, 2013, 7:30 PM.
All in favor? All right. Now, we have reports of town officials, and tonight we have the Historical Commission.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see each of you and be able to -- it is nice to see you and be able to give you a little update, a little background maybe on the Historical Commission. I don't want to be redundant, so I try to bring up something that you may not have been aware of. The first is that the Massachusetts -- the Millville Historical Commission comes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section D. So, we are guided by the dictates of that particular chapter and section. And we have to refer to it from time to time, and if anybody would like copies of it, we'd be very happy to provide them. Now, the other thing is, and this something comes up several times during the year, what is the difference between the Historical Commission and a Historical Society? I try to say there is a very vast distinction. A Historical Society is a social, as a society is social. It's a private organization. Very often, it would take on the name of the town. It could be the, like, Oxbridge Historical Society, the Mendon Historical Society, but it does not have -- it doesn't come under any of the regulations of the town. And the Historical Commission is appointed by the Board, and we are governed by the bylaws and all of the policies and procedures of the town. So, that is the difference between the Commission and a society. And then another one, and this is very brief, what is the difference between a National Historic Register District and a Historic District? Again, there is a vast difference. A Historic District in a town first has to be formed through an Article on a Warrant, and then it becomes part of the town government. And again, it comes under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and they set their own rules and regulations, and that is the -- Historic District is the one that, in some instances, say, people say, oh, they dictate what you're going to do with your house. You can only paint it a certain color, or you can't do -- put this kind of a roof on it. That is a Historic District Commission, and Millville does not have one. And if I was ever advised, I suggest that you not have one, because restrictions are not easy to put on residents. And then, so I wanted to do that. Then a report on our past achievements. We were asked a few years back by the Mass Historical Commission to put together the things that we had accomplished, and we came up with a three-page package of what the Commission has accomplished. And again, if any of you would like copies of this, just let me know, and we have them in our files. And I want to say, anytime I speak for the Historical Commission, I speak for its past members as well as its present members. We had valuable talent and time provided by those early organizers and those who followed, and many of the incidents that are listed here, and there are many, were done not by current members, but by past members. Now, on our filed agenda for this year, I had mentioned earlier, is that we're developing a file on the Chestnut Hills section of Millville, which is not very -- it's not the easiest thing to do. We have to go back into the old records of Mendon and Blackstone. But Emil Berthalet has put together a diorama of Millville in 1887, and I haven't heard of any town around that has one. It's absolutely wonderful. Every single building and every stream and river, there's only one river, is on that diorama, and I'll speak a little bit more about that. But that's what I mean about the individual contributions that the members make. It's really unusual. Then, we're working for the completion of the honor rolls for the Korea, Vietnam, Desert Storm, Afghanistan, Iraq. And I have to admit, we had a flurry of responses to our first letters, and now it has stopped. We do not have -- we have not had a big response. So, we had -- we voted at the last meeting that we're simply going to start, we won't have an official honor roll for each war, but we're going to list the names of those as they come in, and perhaps that will generate more interest. And so, I'm appealing to the veterans or their families, and we have a -- we sent them out to every family we could identify, and there is a form, again, which we'd be happy to mail to them or deliver to them, and it's not -- it's just a one-page form. And again, anybody would like to see it, it's there. Now, it's the ongoing display of historic documents, and we have a new one to unveil, and we're going to do that the week of the 29th. We have two collages in large frames done of Millville, I would say, early 1900s. I'm going to say almost 1900 to 1916. There are pictures of structures in Millville that are long gone, views of the streets that will make you smile, and one to say, I never knew it looked like that. Wonderful. And so, that is our latest acquisition, and we're always welcome. We have to be very careful about accepting donations, because we bring the people in and show them. This was from Richard Collett, who was originally from Millville and now is from Northbridge. We had Mr. Collett come into the building to see the limited space there is for displays, so that he would understand that we only have a limited space. So, if we get a flurry of photographs in, people would have to understand that those might go into an album rather than up on the wall. Now, we come to the landscape considerations. We have the old Town Hall Park Site, and that comes, I know Helen, that comes under the current landscape contract. That's right on the main street, and it's worthwhile, and we said at our last meeting, we'd like to meet with Helen to go over some minor changes that have to be done. Some of the trees have grown too big, and the shrubs are almost now getting out of hand. But -- and then we have the Bannigan City Site. Now, people just, the word, the two words, "Bannigan City," rolls off the tongue of people who have lived in Millville all of their lives. To other people, it is nothing. To the national, to the national public, it's worth, it's, there's a book out on it. I should have brought it in. Joseph Bannigan was a great labor leader in the early, late 1800s, and he actually, his company was second only to Goodrich in the production of rubber, and half of that was done in the town of Millville. People don't understand, the largest strike ever held in this, well, in the Commonwealth was held at the U.S. Rubber Company. He's, and he, Joseph Bannigan, built 18 houses over at the end of Prospect and Hope Street, and he developed Prospect and Hope Street. There were no, those streets did not exist, and he chose very positive names for them, the Prospect of the Future and the Hope of the Future. Then he joined them by Washington Street, because he said there was a Lincoln Street in town, but there was no Washington Street. So, that's a very, very historical little section of our town, and it's always picked up by people who come in from out of town to look at the surveys. Then he built the Bannigan City School, which was a two-room schoolhouse. He donated the land, and he donated the money for the school. And then, when that was torn down in 1944, it lay, it just was there. But those of us who went to school there knew it, and there's a beautiful set of steps that go, that are layered, going from Prospect up, and then up some more, and then up some more, right up to the level, and that's where the Eagle Scout, Ryan Fish, did a, set up a park-like setting. So, we're going to work to see if we can bring more attention to that. But that does not come under the landscape, and that takes me to volunteer work. If we only had a volunteer work, we, once in the spring and once in the fall, and people would just go to designated sites with their rakes and their saws, it would all be done. But that, we only have that done twice a year. And then, we have, and you would go by it today and not know it was there. That was done with two of the selectmen and the members of the Historical Commission. The Grand Trunk Railroad runs through Millville, right where the parking lot is at the top of the hill. Right, right beyond that is a bed of, the actual bed of the Grand Trunk Railroad, and the two abutments that the railroad would cross Central Street. It was going to be a high-speed railroad, the only one in New England, with no grade crossings. They would all be elevated. So, the abutments are there where the train would have gone over Central Street. We have three other very important remnants of the Grand Trunk Railroad. So, we cleared out the section between, right before Basely Avenue, between the parking lot and Basely Avenue. We spent a whole weekend there, and a couple came up with bad cases of poison ivory, but we, and people donated some shrubs. Now, it's totally overgrown, and we really need to have, and that's another one of those volunteer days. We had volunteers go in there and selectively clear. It would not open, it would not open up that little streetscape, but it would also open up the abutment of that historic railroad. So, those are the things that we work on. And then, the UDOT Tower Site is just perfect, but we noticed that, and Helen and I have talked about that, there are a couple of shrubs that are really, they've, I think they're going to have to be taken out. And our concern is if they're taken out, it's going to open up that site again, and pretty soon, somebody will be parking, so we have to decide what kind of shrubs that will be, and we'd be very happy to work with you on that, Helen. And the other thing is, of course, we're always, we're faced with a lack of funding. We have $400 to work with, and we do, we are grateful to the Cultural Council, who have been generous to us in the past. And that takes me to the one sheet I wanted to give you, and I think it's still upstairs. Right out here in front, when we had our first study done, it was determined that there were five historic periods in, right here on this site, starting with the 1667 and coming right up to 2013. There is a site to represent each of those five historical periods, and I say, they're etched in stone, because the first one is that 1727 grist mill stone. It's there. It proves that there was a grist mill right here at the river, and it's etched in stone. And then, we found the, it wasn't cornerstone, but one of the, one of the base, bases of the Longfellow School, and we had, the Historical Commission had that engraved, 1850. So, we have 1727, we have an 1850 stone, then we have 1890 is another period, and that is the UDOT Tower itself. And then, it comes up into, it said, what do we have for the 1940s? Well, 1940 to something. We have the other, the other school, the Annex, which later became the police station. And we're looking on the grounds here to see if we can find a proper stone on which we could have Longfellow Annex and the date of that, which was 1967. And then, also to be included in that period of time was the year that the whole, this whole area, schoolyard, was completely changed. At one time, the schoolyard area ended right at the bottom of these steps. There was a fence that went along there, and on the other side was a space and a road that went into houses out in the back. And during the WPA time, when they put men to work, they took the road out, they tore all the houses down, and they extended the schoolyard out that far and put up, if you get on the other side, you'll see the stone wall that they put up there, which was a massive undertaking. And then, the little area out in front with its cement is a sign of the WPA days, and the same, the same wall runs across at the UDOT Tower. So, we have something for every one of the historic periods, and I left one out, the 1900s. Upstairs is a 1925 header, granite stone that came from the first business block that was built in Millville, and that was the King Block, and it's engraved, "King, 1925." So, we would like to have that moved, and with your approval, we would have a collection of all of those historic periods, really etched in stone, right in front of the building. So, we, that might be our next grant application to the Cultural Council, to see if they would help us, because we can't spend our $400 in October, and then it's gone for the rest of the year. And then, on our, again, on our agenda, we still have the walking tour for the, and the Raceway and the Blackstone Canal Cleanup. And that takes me to the Open Meeting Law, which is a very valid and very important law, but it certainly puts, it certainly holds you up. If you only meet once a month, and you have, you have different ones from a committee reporting, you have to wait a whole month to report, because it isn't either, it isn't always easy to get people back together, and you can't just say, well, let's get, let's meet out in front of the school. If three of us meet, it's a, we're violating the Open Meeting Law. So, those are the things that really, I have a lot of good to them, but some restrictions. We have to find a way to, I don't mean get around it, a way to handle it. So, it's, and then we have the Raceway and the Blackstone Canal Cleanup. That's another one. We have to go, we met on Tuesday, and Wednesday, I met with the Conservation Commission. We have to fill out a form. Now, we have to wait till our next meeting to have it acted on. Then, we have to wait for the Conservation to approve it. By that time, it's going to be almost December, and we will not start the project that we wanted to do in the fall. So, some way, if anybody has any suggestions as to how we can get, I don't say around them, we're not trying to bend the Open Meeting Law, but we have to have, be able to have a random meeting occasionally. That's what I would say. And then, you mentioned that the Centennial, the Historical Commission is asking permission to use the building from 12 to, no, 12 to 2. And we would like to open this room, because there is the history of Millville done by the hands of women who did that quilt, and we'd like to bring Emil's diorama down here so people can see it. We would like to offer the veterans' room for people to see, and then tours, if you would call it, of the front yard, and we don't know yet about the, we'd like to open the classroom, too. And that will be done, we have the volunteers who have willing, who have said they would come in and man their posts for that. And so, that's as fast as I could make it, and I hope it's complete. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
I don't know.
But if you want any copies of these, the one, especially in Massachusetts General Law, that would be a good one to read, and so maybe you'll find it in your, your package one of these days.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Enjoy the fall season.
Thank you, too. Next, we have the First Public Forum. And now, we have Correspondents. Helen, would you cover in your report Timothy McLaughlin, or is that? Okay, so, those of you who know that Millville is very proud to have sent a young man to West Point this year, TJ McLaughlin, Jr. So, on August 17th was Acceptance Day, and up at West Point, that they featured a parade of the entire Corps, Corps of Cadets on the Plain West Point Primary Parade Grounds. Traditional marches played by West Point's outstanding military band. The class of 2017 takes to field, wearing their new white caps, signifying completion of their cadet basic training, also known as Beast Barracks. So, it's quite an accomplishment. There's a very long, lengthy, three-page description of what he's been up to and what he's going to do. Anybody interested in it? It is at the Town Hall. I have attended those ceremonies as a kid when I lived in New York, and it is quite a, quite a thing to see, West Point and all the stuff that they do. It's really amazing, and the dedication of the young men and women that go to that, and they're doing it for the well-being of this country. It's really amazing. So, congratulations to him and his family. And that is all I really have for announcements. Our Correspondents. Unless somebody else has something else. We have next appointments and resignations. We have two resignations, sadly, but very understandable, from the 100th Centennial Celebration. It's Mr. and Mrs. Bowen, Robert and Ellen. Mr. Bowen writes a letter, or maybe Mrs. Bowen, I don't know who, so I don't want to take the credit away from either one. Very nice letter. "After much thought, we have made a decision to submit our resignation as members of the Millville Centennial Committee. Due to recent family illness, coupled with the fact that we are active members on the council and aging, contribute many hours of volunteer work at the senior center, we find we are unable to devote the time needed to provide activities and planning on the Centennial Board. We will be happy to assist committee members in their future endeavors, but feel to retain the two seats on this board without the ability or time to devote 100% is a detriment to the Board's progress. Chairman Keith and Jen Dean-Wing, along with the present committee, are to be commended for their diligent work in planning the town's 100th celebration. It is with great, it is with regret that we find it necessary to convey our decision to resign at this time, but feel it appropriate, as it will afford other town residents an opportunity to consider submitting their names for appointment consideration, allowing them to the opportunity to add their efforts on behalf of the town of Millville. Thank you for your vote of confidence in us affecting our appointment a year ago." So, well, we.
Motion to accept the resignation of Robert Bowen, Robert Bowen, from the Millville Centennial Committee.
Second?
Second.
Okay, and again, thank you very much for all your efforts, and also thank you for all the hard work you do at the Senior Center, and it does not go unnoticed. So, thank you very much. Next, we have Executive Secretary's Report, which I'm sure is going to be nice and short for us.
It is. I just wanted to give you a brief update as to what's going on in the basement here at the Town Hall. As you all know, recently, we found a black mold situation. The insurance company is covering the mold remediation project up to $25,000. The contractor was sent in, chosen by the insurance company, removed the wallboard, carpeting, you know, some of the studs, and did some cleaning. They sent OSHA back in to do some testing, and unfortunately, OSHA found that there was still mold in the room, including the air, and on some of the files. We then contacted the state, discussed the situation with the state, the Records Retention Department. They told us to, you know, get rid of any files that we needed to get rid of, just keep an inventory, and let them know after the fact as to what we needed to dispose of. So, the contractor was sent back in. We went back downstairs, and last week, they disposed of the majority of the files that had the severe mold, and that I felt as though weren't really something that the town had to absolutely keep. There are still some files that we did keep that do have mold, but I didn't feel as though we, we should give it to those. So, they are coming back in tomorrow to take away their equipment at 10:00 AM, and OSHA is coming back in at 11:00 to do another round of testing, including the air. So, we'll have a better idea as to where we stand once that testing is done. So, that's where we stand on that. If you recall, gosh, probably over a year ago, we had a meeting up at the elementary school with the school committee and the school administration, and we discussed primarily the roof project and structural issues at the time, but there were several other issues and items that we had discussed with respect to preventative maintenance and kind of who was doing what. And those were some things that were included on the agenda that we had hoped to discuss a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately, the water situation took up all of that time. But I didn't know if the Board was interested in scheduling a meeting with the school committee to discuss some of these items, or how you wanted to handle that.
I'd like to address especially the HVAC part, where we're not, we've closed off all the fresh air intake.
Right, yeah, that, well, that was one of the items.
That's a big issue, yeah. You know.
I would make a motion to the Secretary to schedule a meeting with the school committee.
Okay, thank you. A second?
I'll second that. Get some dates.
Yep. Okay. All in favor?
And I also wanted to just bring to the Board's attention and And I also wanted to just bring to the Board's attention, and this actually has been sitting on my desk for a few months. One of the Board members had suggested that we complete the work request form for the animal control vehicle, to have some, I think, body work done on that. So the animal control officer did complete the form as requested. However, in my discussions with him, he's very leery about actually having the work done. Because when you send a vehicle off to BBT, they actually keep it for quite a long time. And it actually says here right on the application that the municipal property has to be left for repairs or alterations for as long as, you know, they need. So he had some concerns because without that vehicle here, they would have no means to deal with the animal situation. So I didn't know how the Board wanted me to handle this. Now that the school is back in session, I just need some direction on what you'd like me to do with this.
Why don't you call the school and find out from the department that takes care of what he's looking for? What would their timeframe be? And explain to him your urgency of when they repair it, how long would they keep it for? Then we can decide which way to go with that.
Just make them aware, we're not like normal towns that have two or three animal control vehicles. We have one. Because, I mean, we definitely don't have the money to have it done, outsource it. And we definitely, and we really appreciate Valley Tech doing it for us, but we also-
And I just want to explain, I haven't submitted this yet. In the past, I will let you know that when we have had body work done, the estimates from BBT actually have come in higher than some of our local body repair shops. So I don't even know that this will be the lowest bid, our lowest proposal. But I didn't even, you know, if it was going to be a problem with the timing, I didn't even want to waste their time or hours and send it in. But I can make a phone call and speak with the department.
If we can get it done cheaper elsewhere, then I'll definitely go somewhere.
But I did want the Board to know that the department head did fill out the form as requested. With respect to the Highway Surveyor, a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about some outstanding items. And the Board was going back and forth about whether to meet with him as a whole or whether just two Board members should meet with him. The Board had asked me at that time to reach out to him and see what he preferred. I still haven't heard back from him, so I'm not sure how you'd like to proceed on that. I have noticed that some of the issues on that punch list are being addressed. So I'm not quite sure if maybe his plan is to just address those items.
Well, that's fine. I mean, there's not much, you can't make him do, meet with us.
Greater concern is Chapter Ninety, addressing Chapter Ninety.
That's, that's the big issue.
Oh, I know.
Line painting?
I've, I've asked.
My opinion, line painting is a waste of money, but it has to be done. I mean, because you, we all know you stay to the right. You know?
So you'd like me to continue with him and try to get some dates?
Yeah, especially about the Chapter Ninety and the other stuff. I mean, we don't want to micromanage and he seems to be doing okay at it, so. But the Chapter Ninety is a big concern for the, for our budget, as you know, so.
Okay, and the last issue is the EMS water. I didn't get in, I was at a conference with Mr. Reposa for most of the day. But when I got in at about three o'clock, Mr. Ferrari had sent me an email or copied me on an email that he had sent to the other engineer, Mr. Preventure. So they, at the Board's request, at the last meeting two weeks ago, they have made contact with each other and they appear to be having some discussion. If you recall, the Board's final decision was to have the two engineers work together, put their heads together and see if they could come up with a mutually acceptable proposal to present to DEP and the Board. So they have been in contact. So I did reply to, to Mr. Ferrari, thanking him for the email, advising that it was my hope that he would have something to present to the Board by the Board's next meeting on October seventh. And that will have already be run by DEP. So that's where that stands. However, right before I came into the meeting this evening, Mr. Law brought some additional information to my attention. So I'll turn it over to him and let him explain what he advised.
At our last meeting, we had a discussion with Small Waters. And at that time, I really didn't have much information to ask certain questions on levels and how we ended up where we are today with the water being out of compliance. And I have this for the, for the people there. So after doing investigation and talking to Bob in depth about these waters, come to find out that it's, there were certain things that weren't followed. There were certain things that were changed. I just want the Board to go over and read this. It's pretty self-explanatory. I recommend, if they're reading this and talking to Bob, I would go with Plan B. That's my take on this. Basically, what happened was, when a process system is built, it's basically laid out in four levels. You've got low, medium, high, and at compliance. What happened was, we started going, our levels started raising. And these are the numbers that these people took. And there was a gentleman there that takes samples all the time, so the numbers don't lie. What happened was, not to go into too depth, it started raising. And we went out of low and we ended up in medium. And nobody was called upon. So what happened was, we ended up with a runaway freight train. It ended up getting out of hand. They couldn't bring it back. And that's where we are today. So with that and all my investigation, I do have a, a way of fixing it, and a guarantee. But I'd like the Board to look at it, read it, see what their input is on it. Some of the stuff is very disturbing, the way it was handled. That can be fixed by a maintenance procedure program, which will be put in place if the Board recommends it, which I highly do. With that said, read it. I can't go really into more detail than that. Basically, there is nothing wrong with the tank that we put in. That was a, wasn't a proper, how can I say, assumption on, on wastewater part. We got another email, all of us, that it was nothing wrong with the tank. And then we got another email saying they don't know why it's doing what it's doing. My point is that when we have an operator in our school, no matter what company it is, and having problems, they should call for support. They should call for help. They should call, I'm Secretary, I need some help because it's going out of compliance. With that said, it wasn't done. So it is what it is now because it wasn't done properly. And if it was done properly, we wouldn't be in where we are right now. So with that said, read it and then maybe we can make a, have Bob come in next week and discuss it with him. I mean, next Board meeting, discuss it with him. But this is something that we need to address right away. We can't lay on this. The longer you wait, the worse it gets. So.
And this is the attachment from Bob?
Yep, yes.
Because there's no name on it.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I just want to be sure.
This, this is something that I went back and forth with Bob for a couple of hours, getting information, him giving me information, and this is our conclusion that we came up with. And with the numbers that we had, this and that, the only thing I could say is, it isn't easy fix. It's not a difficult fix. It's not a, a complex system. It's a pretty simple system. But all I'm saying to the Board is, we need to address it very fast. Because I'd like to see this thing back to its normal range because I don't think the kids should be put to burden.
Mr. Law, when you refer to Plan B, are you referring to Option Two, replacement of the green sand filter?
That's correct. See, what happens is, and not to give you the detail, if they go, like the last meeting that we had where they said they fluffed the bed, and that's because they have a lot of heavies in it and the heavies can't come out. It's like a sand filter. With that said, with the labor intense to regenerate the media inside those sand filters and the labor costs, because it's labor intense, you're better off just dropping the sand right out, putting new sand, find your baseline and go from there. That way, you regulate everything back to normal. He guarantees that he can bring us back to compliance, back to a low range. And then with that said, he would put a maintenance schedule in, which they have to follow. And then what happens is, if you go out of compliance, it automatically tells them to have to call the Executive Secretary and bring in support. Period.
All right, now because- Do they work for the school? Do they work for us?
Well, right now, Small Waters works for us. We, I mean, they, they take care of our water. So if they have a problem and they're out of their compliance, it starts raising the levels, then they should immediately pick up the phone and call Helen and get the engineer in there to find out what's going on. That was not done.
Well, they, they, not to interrupt, but they, they were working with another engineer, keep in mind, that the Board did approve, so. Not that I'm defending or supporting Swiss, but they were working with an engineer and a call was made to an engineer, just not the one that knew how to fix the problem.
That's correct. And also, I believe the Executive Secretary was not informed.
No.
Well, she should have been because she is our ears and eyes and she should have been informed about this.
Okay, now, so we don't break open meeting law.
So that's all I have to say.
I just have one question. What does Swiss get for the basic maintenance a year? Do you know off the top of your-
Off the top of my head, I, I can't recall. I want to say it's around, well, we add a lot in for the lab testing. To them, strictly, I want to say it's around ten, give or take. I can't remember off the top of my head. I guess I would need clarification from the Board because the direction to me two weeks ago was that the engineers were going to work together. So in an email that I just sent off to Bob, I reiterated the fact that that was the Board's request. So is, is the Board now telling me that they're willing to look at Bob's proposal alone and to disregard Mr. Preventure's ideas of options?
If a guy will guarantee the fix, go with it.
He's guaranteeing it.
He said, because I'm not gonna. And he guarantees it.
Okay, I, I just want clarification that that's what I-
And he wants to do it without spending thousands of dollars of our money, which I like that idea.
So by, just so, you know?
So now we should actually get off the subject because we're going to be in violence. You're welcome. Okay, under Old Business, we have Fire Station Two. Last meeting, we spoke about a proposal of a building up on Main Street. And I'd like to, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to allow the chief and the captain of fire to speak with Marilyn and speak with the Finance Committee and anyone else that would, would be of some help for financial direction on the building and to free us up from the burden of, and the, I mean, we're, we're basically hanging from a cliff right now with, with garage space for two of our very important vehicles, so. And if, if that lease is ever compromised in any way, we've got two vehicles that cannot be out in the cold, will be out in the cold. So, you know, the chief and, and the captain have, have taken steps forward to look to prevent a, you know, a very bad condition as, as I just stated, so. And if, if we could all, you know, just, not that we're approving a building or, or anything, or even approving the use of a certain parcel of land, but at least give him the blessing and whoever he needs to work with him to pursue this, this project. And, and it would be a great step forward for, for all of our EMS and, and possibly municipal offices. You know, I mean, we don't have the funds or, or, you know, to back us to, to do a feasibility study on what type of a municipal building. But if we start with a small building with, with the possibility of being able to, to add on to it in the future, once we know the real direction. But in the meantime, you know, I, I feel, you know, speaking for myself, that it is important to take steps forward to protect our fire equipment before we're forced to do something that could cost us extreme amount more money than, than we could spend now. So.
I agree. Thank you. We had a very productive meeting a couple of weeks ago and outlined the reasons why we need it and the steps we have to take. But it's very time consuming to move to the next step without the desire of the Board of Selectmen to tell me to do that. I've looked at some costs already. Pretty confident I could put together a price relatively quick for the entire construction of that Phase One within a matter of weeks. So I'd like to meet with Finance to determine which way we could possibly go, which would be most productive to the town and save us the most money. Whether it be to go out to bond, do a debt exclusion, whatever we have to do to make it work. That's what I'm looking for.
Right, okay. So would I have a motion on the floor for, for?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion that we proceed to letting the chief go through Marilyn, start getting the numbers and find out where the, where we stand and talk to the Finance Committee to pursue the Phase One of Firehouse.
And again, the property on Main Street that we're talking about is adjacent to the old cemetery over between Chestnut Hill and Main Street.
Correct. Does it necessarily have to include that property?
No, it doesn't have to include that property, but the property that, that was proposed because it has two accesses to two main roads in town. Well, two out of probably the three main roads.
I don't see any problem in pursuing that. You need, you need to understand the cost. So that's, you know, logical step.
And also to, to just remember as, you know, right now, we're renting, leasing, however you want to put it. So we're, every year, the, the seven thousand dollars is never coming back.
Ultimately, town residents have the final say.
Right, and it, once we have proposals and everything at Town Meeting, when, when everything's all said and done and we have drawn, then it'll go to a Town Meeting with a final vote. And then it's out of our hands at that point.
Yep.
If we don't give him the opportunity to pursue, we'll never know.
I second John's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I just add? Would it be possible, because afterwards, you know, the wheels keep going, that I know the drive-through or actually the pull-out is, is what, safe? Is there enough room on that property instead of just doing a bay for two vehicles, but longer to have a smaller vehicle, so you might have to, so you might be able to house more? So that in the future, me thinking, if you can get four vehicles because you've been longer and you might have your, I don't even know what's the ambulance or the forestry, I don't even know if they have a forestry truck anymore. But, and then that we could almost take a bay away from the current station to make more space for what you're talking about in storage and those kind of things.
We can. I don't have the map in firmly ahead.
But I'm just saying, would that be a possibility?
Absolutely, because-
Because I, I honestly feel strongly that unless we do something about this building, we're going to need space for our, our business aspect of the town. And if we do, I don't want to consume that space with, you know, a fire department that's manned, you know?
I agree.
With, we have, the, the workers here, you know what I'm saying? It's the most amount of people being affected along with our public.
If I remember correctly, it's like one hundred and sixty feet deep. The proposed garage is only sixty feet deep. That still leaves us at least one hundred feet deep or available space. So we could add another twenty feet to that building with no difficulty at all.
To put in, then you, you might be able, I mean, you might have to, like, you know, in your driveway, someone has to leave to pull everyone through and have everyone facing the right way for when the emergency comes. But we could almost have it longer to house more so that we wouldn't need any new- so that we wouldn't need a new fire station.
Exactly.
We wouldn't need that Phase Two, where it might be a Phase One for our business aspect.
You could realistically do that.
Okay. That's just something I, I'm like, you know, I'm trying to figure things out.
I was in Franklin on Saturday, I was looking at their new fire station, drive-in, drive-out. It was absolutely wonderful.
Franklin?
Franklin.
Because I think Bell and Ham's has two, right? They have both faces.
All of the new fire stations constructed now are all drive-in, drive-out. They no longer back in. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, next under new...
Can I pull something on the old business? You had mentioned the Chestnut Hill Community Center. Um, I was in correspondence with Diane Lamra because of, um, the Sentinel.
Yes.
So in her email, she gave me some dates. So I'll just put them out there, whether we want to discuss it tonight or, or later. But it would be, um, in October, the dates would be for the Saturday Selectmen Meet and Greet Coffee is, let's see. Their first choice is Saturday, the 26th. The next one would be Saturday, the 19th.
The what?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, and the last would be Saturday, the 5th.
All right, well, October 5th, I, I have a function that I have to go to already, so I, I'm out on that one.
Mr. Chairman, um, the Cable Access cameraman has told me that the only day he would be able to do is, um, October 26th.
That's fine with me, yeah.
I'm out of town for the weekend.
Are you?
Yeah, I am. My hotel's booked. We're going. It's Halloween weekend, man.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah, see, I don't pay attention to that anymore. I just take the candy.
Yeah, no, we, I'm out of town. I leave Friday and I'll be back until Sunday night.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it without me if that's the only date, but I'm not in town.
All right, well...
Shoot for the 26th then, right? Really don't have a choice.
Guess so.
Unless you want to go into November?
I don't think you want to really wait that one. Don't know, do you?
November, we, we have a town meeting?
Yeah, we'd be busy with all that stuff then. November, yeah, may as well, I guess. You don't care, Jennifer?
I shouldn't say it. It's not that I don't care.
No, I mean...
But I'm understanding if that's the only date and we want to get it in the fall, I'd rather spark the conversation.
Yep, okay.
And it's a, a meeting without vote? We're just there for open discussion?
Right, yeah.
No motions or votes, then I'm good, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it's just to get everybody's input.
I just don't want anything to happen when I'm out of town.
Well, I mean, technically, it's a, it's a posted meeting, so...
It is, so you could...
It wouldn't be illegal for them to take a vote.
It wouldn't be illegal to.
But it's not, we're not bringing anything like that to the table, though, on the agenda, so...
And hopefully, the, uh, fire chief brings the, uh, proposal down there too, to present that, so if there's any questions or answers.
Civil and Bead, that's my room today.
Yep, okay.
And that's nine to 11 again, same hours?
Yeah, that, that seems pretty good on a Saturday.
Okay.
They can take a two-hour break of raking leaves and come have a coffee. All right. So next on new business, we have, uh, Chief Landry and Helen are constantly using their personal credit cards to purchase office items or anything that the town might need. Well, so it ends up being, um, time-consuming and it costs, costs administrative dollars because, uh, they have to submit vouchers and then, and then Marilyn has to go through and then Lisa has to go through some extra work that, that should, that could be avoided by us having, um, a town credit card. So as long as there's a P.O. number or whatever system we use when we're making a purchase, then Lisa and Marilyn will know exactly what was bought for who and then boom, the bills get paid quick and a lot less man-hours are wasted. So with that said, uh, there is a credit card policy, uh, three pages long, well, two and a half, with a area of a lot of signatures, so... I guess, uh, to... Helen would keep it under lock and key in her office and only a handful of, of, um, town officials would, would have access to it. I mean, anybody could request something to be purchased with it, but only a few people would have the actual authority to sign or, or give the PIN number over the phone to, to a vendor, so... I don't know, I don't want to beat a dead horse. It's, it's a law policy. If anybody would like to read it, it's, it's here at the town hall. So...
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we proceed with the credit card application for, uh, the town needs under the supervision of the executive secretary.
And, and Marilyn has actually, in the past, our, our town accountant, for those that don't know who Marilyn is, um, in the past, she has, you know, not really been thrilled about it and, but she definitely agrees that, that it would save, um, you know, lots of time for the administration and, you know, the burden of the people using their, you know, private, uh, credit cards.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, final public forum. All members forum.
Yeah, I got a call today, normal about streetlights in town being out. Who's responsible?
I actually received that email, uh, late this afternoon and I, um, replied that I would take care of that first thing in the morning.
Yeah. Usually when I, I just call Kristen and leave a message, but I don't, personally don't know who really calls National Grid, but...
Do we know...
But she, she takes care of that, whoever she calls.
Do we know how many, uh, streetlights we have in town?
I have all that information in my office.
There's a, you know, green energy issue thing. And I, I would like to speak with you at some time about, if you know what's going on in the elementary school.
Yeah.
If those are all in, that's, uh, the trend now is to switch to LED. LED and, uh...
Well, we have Jim, um, from National Grid. He's actually a resident in Millville, but I deal with him a lot on, on projects outside all over the state. And so he's on that department and at National Grid.
What I wanted today to get some help with there.
So he, you know, 'cause I noticed a lot of cities and towns that do have LED streetlights now. And it, um, it's, you know, there, there are incentives out there still from the federal government to, to switch ours, so... If, you know, that would help, if that would, if LEDs would lower our monthly, um, lease for these streetlights.
They would last longer, too, right?
Well, they definitely last, you have the maintenance is done and then the, the disposal of the bad, you know?
We could apply those charges to our grant.
These are hazardous materials that are up there besides. They have to be properly disposed, so...
Joe, have you spoken directly with a, a rep who handles the streetlights, with our government rep?
Uh, no.
No, I can get you his name. He's, he's very helpful.
Final public forum. No money. So our next regular meeting is Monday, October 7th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, right here at the Longfellow Center. And, um, thank you, everybody, have a good evening. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.